Good afternoon. We will now call to order our Education Committee with a hearing on Resolution 140666. We will ask the Clerk to read the title of the resolution.
Resolution 140666, authorizing the Committee on Education to conduct hearings concerning the time and financial costs of standardized testing administered to Philadelphia public school students, as well as the effects of testing on teaching and learning.
Thank you very much. Again, we thank all of you for coming, and we are very proud that the -- let me note that there is a quorum here. To my left, Vice Chair, Councilwoman Blondale Reynolds Brown; to my right, Councilman Mark Squiller, who introduced the legislation, and who will be speaking first; to his right, Councilman W. Wilson Good; and Councilman David O. Thank you very much, Councilman Squiller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is an important issue with standardized testing. We actually want to find out from the district, from the people involved in schools, from educators, through other municipalities throughout the region, how testing are being implemented, how they are being handled within the school district, what resources are being used for that, and then, after that, try to come up with ways to see if the testing is used for other purposes, and maybe for, you know, graduation purposes, for teacher qualifications, for failing or passing schools, and other systems that the standardized testing may be used for. We have a great opportunity today to learn from the district and learn from people with magnificent history in this subject, and to understand how this affects not only our students, but how it affects our schools, and how it affects the city moving forward through the education process, where every child deserves a quality education throughout the city of Philadelphia. So I'm not going to speak real long. We have some great testimony here, and I think it's important just to hear all sides and to see how we can move forward after this hearing, maybe to have another hearing or to maybe understand how the district will work with the community, with council, to maybe change some of the ways that testing may be implemented at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to make an opening statement? Okay, I have one that I'd like to make, especially from reading yesterday, that this testing costs somewhere in the tune of $65 million for all the problems that it exists. So we have a statement called Keystone Exams: What We Need to Know. It is important that we are gathered here to discuss high-stakes testing. The Keystone exams for graduation have been announced, but many of us are still baffled as to why they are considered so necessary. Information about these exams does not flow. The general public, and parents especially, don't learn about them until key decisions have been made. In order to get acquainted with the concepts and standards used in testing students, one needs to be computer literate and have access to a computer, because everything is published online and in very technical language that does not clarify, but rather muddles the details. So many parents who do not have computers in their home for themselves or for their children have problems, yet parents still have a very important role to play in keeping their children ready to learn. They have to pay strict attention to their attendance, behavior, academic performance, and social adjustment. Parents need all the help they can get about critical issues, such as graduating on time and with diplomas. Teachers and parents need to be invited to testify about the educational decisions that affect their students from preschool to 12th grade. Their input is vital to an improved system. There are too many arbitrary manipulations from administrators and not enough basic reference material directed toward the core of educators and their students. I would be more comfortable with the test if I felt that the students were being adequately prepared in class to take them, and if they were being introduced in school to the courses that will equip them to join in a technology-based workforce. But I know this is not true. The Philadelphia School District is grossly underfunded. Basic resources are in low supply or absent, in many cases altogether. Teachers are spending their own money to buy supply items that are needed for teaching and learning. Nurses are being shifted day by day from one school to another. Libraries are closed in schools, and librarians do not afford the dignity they deserve as guardians of our collections and inspirational reading motivators. With all these shortcomings, how are students going to learn effectively? How would they be ready for college and vocational opportunities? When education funds are clipped, students feel the deprivation and their performance suffers. Classes are getting larger because so many teachers were laid off due to budget deficits. Larger classes make it difficult for teachers to help struggling students, and in this climate, discipline problems may distract teachers from their primary assignments. It is no secret that students of color, students living in poverty, students still learning English, and those students with disabilities are more likely to be receiving an inferior education due to discriminatory practices such as tracking, poor school facilities, high teacher turnover, and frequent and expensive high-stakes mandatory exams that loom as stumbling blocks to graduation with a diploma. What chance will these students have to pass the exam at the proficiency level? An effective education is one that will keep students moving and learning with interest and enthusiasm, seeking knowledge and understanding throughout a lifetime. Today more than ever, school systems are gravitating toward high-stakes testing. Perhaps it is driven by globalization. We want our students to be competitive on the international level. But perhaps we're worried about robots taking over our jobs. This is why we must make the connection between high-stakes testing and the job market. Without a high school diploma, many will find it difficult to secure a good job. Long-term unemployment has economics and social ramifications. What about pension and social security or health care in the futures of these individuals? These are the interventions I recommend to help us measure up to the challenges ahead. Number one, adequate funding for our school districts. Two, greater investment in teacher training, educational administration, and research. Three, high salaries for qualified teachers. Four, high investment in science and art curricula. Five, active engagement from parents and guardians in their children's educational progress. Parents stressing the importance of good behavior and good study habits. And excellent communication from administrators to facilitate the flow of information and the acknowledgement of parents as partners. Counselors, nurses, librarians, sports, art, and music teachers. Training our students for teamwork, independent, and group projects. Research techniques, community service, and home engagement. Seven, expert subject teachers introducing our students to academic rigor and preparing them for exam success. I thank you all, and thank you for your patience in listening to our statement about where we are and where we must try to go. All right, we will now call a panel. State Representative Mike Tobash, 125th Legislative District; Jerry Jordan, President, Philadelphia Federation of Teachers; I understand Donna Cooper, Executive Director, Public Citizens for Children and Youth, had to leave. Someone's making her statement. You all may come forward, and we will begin your testimony. Second panel, Mr. Chris Schaefer, Deputy Chief Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, School District of Philadelphia. You will be next. Thank you, and thank you for your patience, and we certainly invite you to identify yourself and begin your statement, in any order. It's fine.
It's a game that we play in school.
It's quite all right. Good afternoon. Feel free to begin. Thank you.
So, thank you so much for inviting us here today. We're honored to be in your beautiful City Hall, and we are happy of the focus of your resolution. I'm Representative Mike Tobash from the 125th Legislative District, which is Scooke Hill and now Dauphin Counties. And I'd like to introduce to you my Chief of Staff. It's Ally Hobbs. Ally is our education expert on staff. She is in the process of getting her doctorate at Penn State University, and it's on education. So much of the policy that we develop around education has to do with the good work that Ally has done and continues to do for our office, and really for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I was interested, Councilman Squiller, to see your resolution and to read it, and I'm happy that you're focusing on the dynamic of standardized testing in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I can tell you, I was at a small school district in my district just last evening, talking to a group of middle school students. It was an after-school program that they had, and I brought up a point when I started my conversation with them, and there's a couple of things that I believe that you need to be successful in education, and number one, students need to learn. It's very simple. I think it's simple here, it's simple in Pine Grove, it's simple throughout the country. Number two, students, I think that they need to want to continue to learn. I mean, our education system has got to instill a desire for students to continue to learn for them to be successful, and if they are so fortunate and lucky to gain knowledge that is valuable in the marketplace, they really have an opportunity to be successful. And then, when we talk about standardization in our education system, in a Commonwealth as diverse as Pennsylvania, in a city as diverse as Philadelphia, there's a lot of red flags that go up, and again, I commend you for your desire to understand more about this standardized testing dynamic that's taking place in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and really across the nation. As I read your resolution, there's a number of things here that are interesting to me. The first one starts out, and we talk about funding and being under-resourced, and I'm going to take a bye on that, because we're talking about standardization. Thank you. The third item, whereas in this climate of austerity, and make no mistake that we are certainly in the climate of austerity, standardized testing requirements have continued to increase. The cost associated with standardized testing, development, administration, and technology for online testing may mean that there will be fewer funds available for classroom resources, and I absolutely concur with that opinion. Less resources because of mandates put on us by the federal government and on you by state government is absolutely a concern. I agree, and I'm here today to talk a little bit about the process, to again commend you for the good work and the resolution, and your desire to know more, and to encourage you to continue down this path till we really understand what the results of these assessments are going to be. A phrase that we commonly use is we need to assess the assessments before we go too far down this path. You know, this conversation, again, is not a conversation that's unique to the Philadelphia School District or to Pennsylvania school districts overall, but to nationally as well. You know, we've gone down this path with legislation, No Child Left Behind. There's a number of exams that have been implemented in our school districts for many years now. The PSSA exams are exams that our students have been taking for quite a number of years. My daughter, who is now a sophomore in college, took those exams. My daughter, who is an eighth grader in high school, is taking some of those exams, and now, in fact, taking our Keystone exams. One of the problems, as we've done our work, that we've uncovered, is that the PSSAs are very broad exams, shallow in content, and disjointed from the learning process. I believe that's what we've heard. We've heard that from educators and administrators. I can tell you that the term "teaching to the test," I think, comes from the analysis of PSSAs and the belief, and in the practical application, that children, students, would gain some knowledge, and then they'd have to go back and relearn that and take the test again, taking away valuable time for additional learning because of these assessments. Now, we have heard, and I believe, that this Keystone exams that we have implemented so far in the Commonwealth are better in many respects than the PSSAs. Number one, they are an end-of-curriculum exam, and for that reason, I believe that at the end of that curriculum, the exam can be taken, and it does not require relearning material that was learned before and going back and teaching once again to the exam. I think they're more focused, I think they're in-depth, and they have to do more directly with the curriculum that's being taught, and number one, they're timely, because, as I mentioned, at the end of the curriculum, the exam can be taken. But make no mistake that they were developed at great expense to the Commonwealth. I heard Councilwoman Blackwell mention a number of $65,000. Our research shows something very similar to that. So the cost to develop these exams within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, I believe, has cost somewhere south of $80 million for their development and countless additional dollars for the implementation of the exams within our schools and school districts. The cost to change from the PSSAs to the Keystone exams are something that needs to be taken into consideration as we look at the overall cost of the test. I can tell you that it is our belief that even though they are better, too much of a good thing or too much of a better thing can be problematic, and I think that's what we see with the Keystone's. Right now, we've got three Keystone exams, and they are algebra, biology, and English. And it's reasonable to think that a diploma in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania should have some consistency, that there should be some understanding that when a high school student graduates and has a diploma, that they have learned reading, writing, and arithmetic. Now, I'm not an educator myself, and I'm not certain that the content, the material that we're teaching to, and the content of these Keystone exams are good for applicable, productive citizenship after you graduate. That's an argument that I think we can talk about a little bit more with others here at the table. But I can tell you this, that last year, we had legislation that started to push back on the implementation and development of more of these Keystone exams. So right now, we've got the three, and we are on schedule and slated to do two additional exams, and they are civics and writing. So somewhere around $60 to $80 million developing the first three, additional tens of millions of dollars to develop more, and then implement those. The place that we really took issue with was there, after the five were implemented, we've only got three, two more kind of on pace to be implemented at some time in the future. After that, there were five more Keystone exams which were to be developed by the year 2021. So at great expense to the Commonwealth, at a tremendous amount of classroom learning time, at that expense, there were going to be 10 Keystone exams developed and implemented in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and it was our belief that it was too many. So we developed House Bill 1506, and we said we've got to put the brakes on these Keystone exams. We need to assess the assessments, give ourselves some opportunity to see if it is really meaningful and the intent of the exams are being realized after their implementation. You know, we constantly hear that, and it was mentioned again by the Councilwoman, that we need rigor within our classrooms, and rigor, I think, is important. It's a worthwhile endeavor to get students to work hard in the process of learning, but I'm not so sure that these Keystone exams represent the rigor that we're looking for. Ms. Hobbs, she will tell you a little bit more about the development of 1506, I believe, and rigor within the classroom. You've got some testimony that you'd like to discuss.
I do. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Ally--
Please pull the microphone closer to you, and I introduce yourself again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Ally Rhodes Hobbs, and I am the Chief of Staff in Representative Tobash's office. I am also a doctoral student at the Pennsylvania State University in Education, and I've spent an amount of time teaching and both researching standardized testing. It was, I'm a former public school teacher, and at the time I left public school teaching was right after I took my students through a path toward the PSSAs in writing, and it was around that time that I decided to go back to graduate school to work on standardized testing and this displaced rigor around it. I have been working with Representative Tobash on House Bill 1506, and it really came from a grassroots effort in our legislative district. Representative Tobash and I spent countless hours meeting with groups in our district that were concerned with the growing number of standardized testing occurring in our public schools. We met with groups of public school teachers, public school administrators, public school parents. We also took time to meet with our higher ed leaders and our business community, and the general consensus that came from those meetings and the data we collected at those meetings was that standardized testing is not yielding the intended or desired results that was originally stated it would. We have formulated a group that we call the Teachers Coalition, and it is a group of public school teachers that we meet with regularly throughout the school year for the purpose of communicating updated policy work around education, and for the teachers to communicate to us how that policy is working or not working, or how it looks in their classrooms. The ideas for House Bill 1506 and the halting of standardized testing and further assessment of the test itself came from the work we've been doing with those groups. When we then shared the information from the public school teachers and administrators with the business and higher education community and found that the consensus, the extensive and growing amount of time spent on standardized testing and the preparation for it, the general consensus was it's not benefiting our students and our future workforce. It was not really looking, or the outcomes of it weren't really what that business community or higher ed was looking for. The main concerns around the standardized testing that came from our work was, one, the fiscal analysis that was needed, which Representative Tobash already talked about, and the tens of millions of dollars that it took to both create, implement, and change from the PSSA to the Keystone. The biggest concern that all of our groups has was to raise the question of rigor. Is it actually rigor, or is it displaced rigor? The idea that it narrows the curriculum, that it's standardizing what is taught and what there is no time to teach because it might not be on the test, is being realized over the idea of embracing multiple intelligences and practical learning for our students. Many of our schools found that they were offering less courses because they could not hire additional teachers, but were taking teachers from maybe enhanced curriculum or elective areas and putting them in remediation offerings for students that needed it. They also questioned that, yes, let's offer remediation to students that genuinely need it, but there was a problem there figuring that out. They also said that it kind of ignored local and individual needs of students, so that the test scores have become the most important product of education and the focal point of public schooling, and that's what 1506 and the additional work that Representative Tobash and I have been working on to change that. While understanding the necessity of measurement and accountability, we must be careful not to allow standardized tests to become the focal point of education, not to waste taxpayer money, potentially tens or hundreds of millions of dollars or more, not to continue without knowledge of outcomes and unintended consequences. We need to be careful of assessing the assessment before we implement more, and not to narrow curriculum to do away with classes that effectively achieve practical learning that leads to a broader and stronger workforce. We need to support legislation at the state level, too, that will give us the time to make sure our costly accountability measures promote the right kind of rigor in our schools, and that measuring and assessing we do in our schools and to our children supports them and promotes their best interests. Remember, standardization does not produce outstanding results. Individualism creates outstanding results. Thank you.
Great, and I'll wrap up our testimony with just a few brief comments. I'm going to bring you up to speed on what we're working on this session. We are introducing a piece of legislation that will really put the brakes a little bit further and try and hold off those last two exams until we really get a good grip on what the first three, what kind of fruit they're bearing. We want to limit the three exams, and number two, we've got questions about the graduation requirement for the Keystone exams. We believe that school districts should have more autonomy. We think that you can do it better in Philadelphia than we can do it from Harrisburg, at least that's my opinion, or from Washington. So we'd like to put the hand, put back in the hands of the individual school districts, whether or not they believe that this Keystone exam should be a graduation requirement, but give them the option to certainly do that. I have to tell you that you are astute in noticing the fact that standardized testing is driving up the cost of education in Philadelphia. There are certainly many issues that drive up the cost. I'll make an editorial note here, aside from standardized testing, that we need public pension reform in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and that's weighed around the neck of every school district that is going to be difficult for us to bear, but that's a different discussion for a different day. I look forward to continuing to work with you and all the school districts within the Commonwealth to make sure that we are coming up with the best possible scenario to give our students an outstanding opportunity for great success within our borders well into the future. So thank you very much. Appreciate being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before Mr. Jordan begins, let me note that we have Chair of the Education Committee, the Honorable James R. Robach. We saw Dr. Robach yesterday. He was here for hearings as well, and we're very, very happy to have him and thank him for coming by this important hearing. Yet if at any point you would like to make a comment, we certainly welcome you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Yes, excuse me one moment, and then we'll have, we will have questions after Jerry Jordan speaks, okay? Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jerry Jordan, President of the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers, and I want to thank City Council for convening a public hearing on one of the most critical issues facing public education. I want to start off by addressing some misconceptions about teachers and testing. First, teachers are not against testing. Quite the contrary. Teachers use tests in the classroom as one way to measure their students' understanding of the content they are expected to learn. Tests help educators to see where they need to provide additional emphasis and support for their students. Standardized tests are certainly nothing new. Like tests given in the classroom, they can provide a wide overview of how students in a school are mastering the concepts they should be learning. When done appropriately, testing is a tool that teachers, students, and parents can use to discover new ways and opportunities for our children to be the best they can be. But the current national fixation on high-stakes standardized tests has very little to do with figuring out how to better teach our children. The supporters of the current testing culture are looking for a quick and easy shortcut for evaluating districts, schools, and teachers. Consequently, the results of standardized tests are used not to improve instruction, but to place sanctions on schools and punish educators. Test scores have become a weapon used by the corporate education reform movement to fire teachers and turn neighborhood public schools over to privately-run charter companies. And when we, as teachers, speak out against the way these tests are being used, we are attacked and told we just don't want to be held accountable for student achievement. Let's be perfectly clear. Teachers feel more accountable for their students' success than any other stakeholder in public education. Teachers hold each other accountable more than any superintendent, mayor, governor, or legislator. Yet teachers have less voice and fewer opportunities to weigh in on the best way to evaluate student learning. That's because properly educating students is difficult and complex. It's much easier for school leaders and elected officials to lay out cut scores and assign arbitrary benchmarks, then force teachers to reach them. This is one of the reasons the teaching profession finds it so hard to retain talented educators. Instead of emphasizing creativity and innovation in the classroom, teachers spend up to one-third of their instructional time doing test prep for fear of a bad evaluation or some other black mark on their record. We teach because we love teaching children, but these days, becoming a teacher means putting yourself in the position to be blamed for everything that is wrong with public education. To add insult, the blame most often comes from officials who have never spent a moment in front of a classroom. The testing culture is also not good for the students. Schools can be challenging enough, but fear of doing poorly on a standardized test is anxiety that children do not need. In Pennsylvania, for the class of 20-- In Pennsylvania, for the class of 2017, performance on Keystone exams will determine whether or not high school seniors get a diploma. As a product of Philadelphia Public Schools, I remember when school could be very tough at times, but school also offered a range of options and ways for students to excel and distinguish themselves. Extracurricular activities and career and technical training opportunities showed all of us that there was more to education than filling in dark circles on a test. Students need to feel that way about school again. That starts with completely eliminating the focus on standardized tests. To be sure, our fixation on these tests has done very little to improve the quality of public education. In fact, it has hurt students by narrowing the curricula. Students now enjoy less music, art, language programs because of the emphasis of scoring well on tested subjects. Time has even been taken away from social studies and science when those topics are not being tested. Even if high-stakes tests, if high-stakes tests were a good idea, students and teachers in Philadelphia Public Schools don't have the resources needed to help improve their performance. I've sat in this room countless times and talked about the paper, books, and classroom materials that the district does not provide for educators and students. I've repeated it over and over again, not just because it's criminal to deny our children these resources, but to show that when it comes to education, money matters. The same holds true for performance on standardized tests. Much has been made, and rightly so, about the $1 billion statewide cut to public education. New research shows that these kinds of cuts have a huge impact on student performance on standardized tests. A study from the Boston Consulting Group reveals that spending an additional $1,000 per students, per student can raise test scores by almost half a percentage point. The same study shows that states that spend more on public education have better student outcomes. Education spending plays an even bigger role when dealing with high-poverty student populations. The Boston Consulting Group's study plainly states that raising achievement in low-income areas requires spending more, not less. Here in Philadelphia, the poverty rate is around 26%. A 2011 study by Sean Riordan shows that the achievement gap between high-income and low-income families has grown 30% to 40% since 2001. Until we can honestly say that our schoolchildren are getting all the resources and tools they need, we should scrap the entire notion of using standardized tests to evaluate their progress. How can a teacher even prepare children to take one of these tests when there are not enough pencils and paper to even practice the concepts? Under these conditions, the results of these tests are almost totally useless. In fact, research shows that even when students improve on high-stakes tests, they often struggle to demonstrate the same knowledge of content in other formats. Our schools aren't getting better in this climate. Our children are not learning at a more impressive rate. Our teachers are under constant threat of reprisal and termination. As we look to the future, it's clear that there are only two groups that benefit from this test-obsessed culture, the first being the companies who create and administer these tests for profit. Pennsylvania has a five-year, $201 million contract with Data Recognition Corporation to administer high-stakes tests. The other beneficiaries are the developers of correctional facilities, like the $400 million prison that the state opted to fund over public education. Sadly, as more of our children that are labeled as failures under this testing regimen, the less opportunities they will have in a 21st-century economy, which means a healthy school-to-prison pipeline. Changing the role of standardized tests won't eliminate all of the challenges to public education, but it will go a long way to broadening the discussion beyond passing and failing, and bring the conversation back to what works in schools. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for the excellent testimony. Are there questions? Councilman Squillor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I know, thank you both for your testimony, all for your testimony. And we see the cost of, we think what the cost is, $65 to $80 million, and that's just, I guess, for the implementation or coming up with the test. Is there additional cost as far as, that you know of, maybe for each individual test that the districts has to buy, or are these tests going to be given to the districts? And then, how are they graded, and then who pays for the cost to, I guess, review the test? Does anybody know that question? Chair?
Well, look, as I'm, and we had a brief discussion before the hearing, there, I mean, there are certainly soft costs associated with the implementation of standardized tests. I mean, as you, as you, in the, within each classroom, implement these exams, and, and the process whereby the exams are brought into the school and administered and graded and tested certainly takes valuable time away from other learning, and it's one of the difficult things to get to. You know, we came up with a number originally of about $230 million, the cost, to implement and develop these exams. You know, at the end of the day, when we got back to the actual cost for development, we came in at that number of somewhere less than $80 million. So, I think it's something that individual school districts, upon implementation, at this point in time, need to develop the amount of money that they're spending on the exams. It's important information for us to know as we move forward and make thoughtful decisions. But I do have to mention this, that merely getting rid of three Keystone exams is not the answer. You have to understand that these three Keystone exams are replacements for the PSSA exam. So, there is a federal No Trial Left Behind requirement saying that we need to have this level of testing. Now, whether that's right or wrong, I'm not here to testify on, but the fact of the matter is the first three Keystones are a federal requirement. So, we've replaced the federal PSSAs with these Keystone exams. Now, the question becomes, how much additional resources and money will we spend on developing additional exams that aren't a requirement of No Trial Left Behind? The cost at this point in time, from all the information we've tried to gather, is uncertain.
Okay. Now, you mentioned the three: literature, algebra, and biology, which is the three Keystone exams that we are going to have to take, starting in 2017. Well, we're taking them, but they, you have to pass them by 17, correct?
Right.
And once, once we have those in place, were those three languages, math, literature, and biology, chosen by the educators throughout the state to say, these were the three that we need to know as a example, every student should have this knowledge in order to graduate?
So, again, look, it's my belief and understanding that these first, that these first three exams are replacements for the PSSAs, and I think the curriculum was dictated as a result of No Trial Left Behind.
So, biology was one of the ones that we believe was dictated by that.
There was a, you know, there was a science requirement, as well as a math requirement and a reading requirement.
So, if we go through and have these tests, now, we don't know, because further questions we'll ask along the way, but the passing grades that are calculated for these tests, and I understand that, and maybe I'm mistaken, but they're anywhere, was it 26 questions, or is there a number of questions that is going to be permitted on each test? Do you know?
They just have the test or after the test itself.
Okay, all right. Well, they said, the answer was saying that they'll determine the cut scores after the tests were done, and then grade it. Who grades the test? Do we know? Okay.
They're sent out from the schools. The schools do not do the grading.
Right. So, there's a high level of security that's mandated by the schools around the testing, and then I believe DRC is then, it's part of their.
Please pull your mic. We just can't hear you.
Sorry. Data Recognition Corporation that has a contract for the test in Pennsylvania then does some of the grading of the test.
Okay. Let me just go back, and you said, we have, so far, we believe there may be two more tests being implemented or developed at this time. There may be legislation out there to slow that down, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It's going to be a bill that we introduce in this session that puts a break and holds it to three exams until we can assess what the result of the first three exams are.
Does there seem to be support in Harrisburg for that?
Look, I think there's growing support surrounding this issue. Just as you have recognized it in Philadelphia, this recognition is taking place throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and throughout the country. So, yeah, we have growing support for this.
And then the additional legislation, you had stated that maybe the possibility of having districts decide on their own whether they want to use the Keystone as a graduation-type implementation?
Yes, but remember, at this point in time, and you understand the process, the legislative process, it would take a legislative change. The course that we're on right now has those three Keystone exams being a graduation requirement.
All right. Well, I mean, that'd be good to ask the district moving forward. If that possibility was there, what would they do moving forward?
And again, I think we get back to the fact that I, that we need, you know, because we have such a diverse state, because you have such a diverse city and school district here, that we need some autonomy, and we need to, each district decides how to best teach their children. Understanding, just as our other testifier has mentioned, that I think it's unrealistic to believe that there isn't some level of testing that is reasonable.
Well, I, I think we all agree. I mean, I think our, my philosophy always was, testing should be a part of the education process, grading, we're not against accountability, you know, we need to be accountable for our students, we want to make sure they are educated, there's got to be a way to do that. It seems like we're going to the system of, only tests can tell us if we are educating our kids properly, and I don't know if that's the answer right now, but it seems like that's where we're going.
Yeah, our concern really surrounds the fact that we are shrinking learning time and expanding assess, assessment time, you know, to an unrealistic level. So, I think, look, the ability to measure, you know, certainly doesn't go away. The desire to have every student in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania diploma that they, the diploma that they graduate with means something and has some consistency, I think is a worthwhile cause and endeavor. We're just not so sure that these Keystone exams are getting to that end.
Okay, thank you.
Before I call on Councilwoman Brown, let me say that we think going from pass to the Keystone is even worse. And that was an important statement you made about spending more time on testing, but we're making education more unattainable than it was before. And it's interesting that Mr. Jordan said you don't even touch the test. So, it's, it's gone from bad to worse, and there are many people in the communities who feel now that there's a concerted effort not to educate their children. I mean, when half, depending on which data you observe, say that they don't pass them, when we've gone from, I mean, my goodness, as many of you know, we don't even teach cursive writing in schools anymore. We don't teach things, and yet we test, 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 so people are wondering where we are going in public education, whether it be teachers, whether it be parents, whether it be students and community. So, all that's being said today is very, very important, and again, I commend Councilman Squillor for introducing this legislation. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Yes, that's exactly where I wanted to start, to thank Councilwoman Squillor for bringing us together to focus on this like a laser beam. And in the years that I've been here, I don't, I can't recall where we put tests front and center, and why we need to look at them. And it should be underscored that none of us, I would suspect, are against accountability. I mean, that, that comes with learning, but you first have to have the learning that is given over an extended period of time before you can fairly measure where young people are. I'm troubled by the fact that we have another battery of tests that are going to be imposed on our young people, and hopefully we'll hear through the testimony that there's some evidence that suggests that this is better, for whatever reason, than what we already have. I'm also hopeful that we'll know what the hard numbers are with regards to administration, some of which have already been alluded to, and how this stacks against tests that we've administered in the past. So, a lot more information, I'm hopeful, will be revealed, and the need to look at this closely is big. So, I thank Councilman Squillor as well. Thank you. Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you very much. Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So, I appreciate your coming in and providing the testimony. I will have some questions. I'd like to get your reactions. So, school plays a critically important role in preparing children for life, getting a job, raising a family, being successful, being happy. The issue is whether or not the schools are meeting their responsibilities to the extent that we expect them to. And in our state, there's great inequities from school district to school district, and they generally center around the socioeconomic status of one geographic location versus another, being that one area that has higher property values, has higher costs of living, has higher levels of education, has better schools, better equipped, more technology. Poorer locations have sometimes horrible schools with no technology, no music, no musical instruments, and very poor outcomes. In this situation, the testing, standardized testing affects each school district differently. A school district that has great teachers, great programs, does not want more testing to interfere with great education. And in school districts that have a large dropout rate, graduate students that can't read, write, get a job, don't have music, art, and other types of after-school activities, are being challenged with the idea of standardized testing to put a level of minimum performance in terms of what that school and school system can produce. It's a test of the student's ability, but a test of the teachers and administrators and government, being the school district, of whether or not they are achieving what they should be achieving. If they are failing, then there is a visible sign that they should be changed, hopefully that greater resources would be put into them, additional funding, more money, more programs. But under the current system, that isn't the way it is. It is more likely that there would be penalties and punishment for that school district and not additional help or, or resources. What is your reaction to that thought? I don't know if it's true or not, but I'm, I'm interested to get your reaction that rather than dealing with this problem universally for all 500 some school districts in Pennsylvania, that they are somewhat different?
Well, look, obviously, from our testimony here today, we've got some concerns surrounding standardized testing, and if we were to get into the, the income statements and balance sheets of 500 school districts within the Commonwealth, it's absolutely a complex issue, and I think it's an issue that we need to talk about on a different day. We share your concern about the dynamic of standardized testing and how it impacts a diverse state, even a diverse school district, like the one in Philadelphia, very differently. So, because of the fact that standardization takes away some level of autonomy, a great deal of autonomy, and the ability to deliver varied curriculum that is important to different school districts throughout the Commonwealth, we share your concern. That's why we've developed legislation, why we continue to, to listen to stakeholders like you, and like the school district of Philadelphia, but also the school districts in, in rural parts of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, certainly the district that, that we represent. And I can tell you that there's, there is some universal belief, number one, I have yet to be in a school district that has not indicated to me that they need more resources to do the good work that they're trying to do, whether it be Philadelphia, or Pottsville, or Blue Mountain, or Tri Valley School District. They all could use more resources to do. They all could use more resources to do their, their good work. But there is also a common theme throughout the Commonwealth, throughout the school district that, school districts that we've visited, that, that the standardization of our public education system and these, the expansion of these standardized tests is problematic.
Thank you. Could I follow up with this question? And first of all, listen, I, I do appreciate, I think, as everybody does in this room, no matter what our opinions are, what a difficult job it is, and we appreciate your tackling this problem. I'm asking these questions because I'm fortunate to have you, all of you in front of me, to give some expert advice here. Because property taxes are the basis of how school districts are funded, some school districts have great resources, and because they tend to have communities of well-educated, high-earning people, they have great resources at home. And I'm not saying that's wrong, that's great. But we have a education system that nonetheless has to provide a minimum level of education on an equal basis to people who are poor, disenfranchised, or have great challenges. And, you know, the, the, the issue that concerns me is that when, when we are now looking at, dealing with the standard, standard, standard tests and, and their application in this process, that underfunding, which is not the in and all of itself, but is a, a very critical part of it, that no matter how smart the kids are, no matter how well-intentioned the parents are, if they don't have enough resources within their school, their school, let's say, not just school system, their school, that they cannot do the best that can be done. A school system that has computers and iPads and paint and clay and 3D printers is going to provide a better education, more relevant, more substantial in terms of preparing their children for jobs in college and other things than a school that doesn't have those things. And with the equitable funding formula that's now being worked out in Harrisburg, of which we are not as a city, and I have to be, I'm just a Philadelphia council person, we're not in that discussion, in any real sense, in my opinion. It appears to me that, that when the funding formula is done, it will be divided among the existing school districts that have elected school boards around Pennsylvania, and every child will receive more money. But overall, Philadelphia will receive less money than it has received in the past. Does that seem likely, or is that unlikely, or is this just unknown situation? And what do you think about the, the trying to equalize the funding of school districts?
Well, I mean, I just get, I just get back to this point that we're talking about the expenses associated with standardized testing right now and our, and our desire to make sure that we've got a good, fair, and equitable system. Look, I mean, the funding, you know, the, the funding issue within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and individual school districts is a difficult thing. I know you have a new tax here, cigarette tax in the, in the city of Philadelphia, you know, that was meant to really derive some more revenue and, and put it back into your public education system. I think it's a worthwhile endeavor for you to continue to focus on the needs of Philadelphia School District. But as far as this hearing goes, our focus on standardized testing is, and, and the expense associated with that is, is really what our focus is. So we're, we're going to have those budget discussions, and I know that as a general assembly, we continue to be concerned about equitable funding for children throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and that certainly goes to each one of the 500 school districts.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're going to also ask Councilman Jones, and we're going to also ask State Representative Jim Roebuck, Chair of Education, to join us at the witness table and make a statement. Councilman Jones, would you like to make your, ask a question now?
Yeah, yeah, I would. I would.
Or you wait for the-
I wait until-
All right. Representative Roebuck, again, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Blackwell. Thank you for allowing me to just make a brief statement on this, on this subject. And I put this in the context, having spent the last two days actually here at City Hall looking at the issue of educational funding. The educa, the commission, which was designed to assess how we as a, as a Commonwealth of Pennsylvania are driving out dollars to school districts, met in Philadelphia, and we held a series of hea, or two hearings that focused on different aspects of the issue. And what is, becomes very clear, as I'm sure that we all would agree, is that it is the issue of funding which dictates, in many, in, in reality, academic success. And I'm a believer certainly in academic rigor. I believe that schools ought to be about preparing students for success in whatever phase of life they choose to proceed, choose to pursue, whether it is indeed to go to college, to go out into the workforce immediately, to go to military service, to go into a, a career technical field. But the foundation has to be laid in the K to 12 system. Now, I'm, I sit on the state board, and the state board adopted the Common Core, the idea of the Common Core standards. But when we did that, we also amended what we were doing to incorporate into the Common Core the keystone exams, with the idea that these exams would allow us a way of assessing how well the Common Core was working. And, and this, in my mind, was a mistake. I voted against the resolution that incorporated or brought about that incorporation. And there were others on the state board as well who argued, I think persuasively, that if you have inequity in funding of school district, of the, among the 500 school districts, then you have, you create an unfair system where students don't have the opportunity to succeed because they don't have the necessary resources in those school systems to deliver educational services in a fair way. And that remains the problem. We don't have a way, a clear way of assessing academic success. We measure student success in the 11th grade. Many students don't pay much attention to that. It doesn't factor into their class standing, into their final grade averages. It, it's, it doesn't really mean very much. But it is clear to me from experiences that certainly we have to do a better job at educating, but also a better job of making sure that students are learning. I sit on the Board of Community College of Philadelphia. I used to chair their Academic Affairs Committee. And what the academic, one of the responsibilities of that committee was, in fact, to do assessments of how well we're delivering educational services. We review curriculum on a five-year cycle. And when the individuals came before our committee to give a report on how well they had done over the last five years, almost invariably, the first words out of the mouths of the faculty, the administrators, and others who were making the presentation was, "We have too many kids, too many students coming to community who need remediation." And I would always ask the same question. Do you know who the kids are? Yes. Do you know them by name? Yes. So you know who they are, you know them by name? Yes. Do you know what schools they came from? Yes. Well, then the next question I would ask, do you ever go back to those schools and say, "You're not doing a very good job"? Dead silence. What we need to be about creating are not more rigid systems of assessment, we need to be about creating better systems of delivering academic excellence to our students. There ought to be a seamless link between K to 12 and higher education. There ought to be a way where if indeed students are coming to college unprepared, then there is responsibility on the part of that college to go back to the high schools and say, "What can we do to make this system work better?". And this is not a Philadelphia problem. I remember speaking to the School Boards Association probably now 15 years ago and using that example, and someone got up from Juliana County, which is in central Pennsylvania, and said, "You know, we had the same problem. We used to teach excellent chemistry courses. We knew our students knew chemistry. They'd go to the local college and they'd flunk chemistry. We couldn't understand what was wrong, but then we went to the college and said, 'Look, what's happening here?'" And they said, "Well, this is the way we teach it." And they found they were teaching it one way at high school, another way at college, and they got to two methods. In sync, it was a seamless transition. There's got to be a sense that education is not divided into nice and all neat, separate entities, but it's about how we prepare our kids to do better. I just want to close with one final example, which hits very close to home for me. I'm a product of the Philadelphia school system. I graduated from Central, and I, and what struck me was that a year ago, when the state did their assessment of high school success, Central High School ended up one-tenth of a point behind being the best high school in the state, according to the state assessments, one-tenth of a point. This year, they fell to being at 300 behind that point. And I think this is directly related to the fact we are not funding schools properly. And, and as long as we don't fund schools properly, I don't care what you use to assess academic success, you're not, you're going, not going to see that a keystone exam makes students better, but you're going to see the lack of funding reduces opportunity for success for all students. So let me stop there. I thank you for the opportunity to make those observations, and certainly would welcome any questions if you might have them.
Thank you, Representative Roebuck. Very, very important testimony, and we appreciate your commitment to our public schools and to community and all you've done in this area. Councilman Squiller?
Yes, thank you. I know Councilman Jones has a couple of questions, but I, I just wanted to say one thing. Now, we, we do, we talked about the funding issue and the lack of it, but yet, we're looking to spend additional dollars for accountability. So that correlation almost doubles the lack of funding that we, that we have for our local school, school districts throughout the Commonwealth. And is there a reason or philosophy, and I know mandated by the federal government to do, no child left behind, we have to do something. But i, in a way, does that also limit our ability to then gain additional funds for our districts throughout the Commonwealth?
I would believe it does, and I think that we're at the point now that we're on the verge of having a, a new governor, and I think we're going to look at the way we've been doing things, and I think there's a, a good chance that some of the things that are now in place will not go forward. I would think there's a very good possibility that the whole structure of keystone exams is going to be reevaluated, or have an opportunity to look at going in a different direction.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We sure certainly hope so. Councilman Jones, and then Councilman O.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for having these hearings on the issue of standardized testing. I have a quick question, and thank you for your analogies-
Thank you.
-on what, what's going on, and I, it drove it home. I agree with everything you said, except for the part about Central. I think it was. I'm gonna let that go. You can't, I'm gonna let that, let it go. But my question becomes on standardized testing. Is there, how much does cultural bias play a part in standardized testing? And let me, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna ask that, let you respond.
Absolutely.
And then, and then give an example of how I think it, it applies.
Certainly, cultural bias does play into that, and I think there have been any number of studies that affirm that, any number, a numbers of examples that affirm that, and so that is an issue, yes.
So, for example, if I did a algebraic equation and said, calculate what a dogleg right hook would be on a golf course, for some people, see, I, I see, I got a response out of Councilman Squiller right away. He understood what it meant, but in some communities, in some neighborhoods, that may not be the, you know, your, your ability to understand what that applied to would be limited.
And I'm sure we could design a test that we could give to someone who was viewed as being highly intelligent that could equally confuse them.
But I, I was going to do that, because since Councilman Squiller knew, I was going to ask him, what are chips, what are kicks, and what are whips? Kicks, whips, and chips. So would you like to respond, Councilman, good?
Chips and money?
Chips and money, very good. What are whips?
Cars.
There you go. And what are kicks?
Shoes.
There you go. But in some communities, that comes-
I thought, I thought it was potato chips.
But, but, but different language, different cultural norms apply in how you would use math, and, and whether you went to Central or not, you know, you have to be from a particular environment in order to relate to what the, what the question is applied to. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you very much, State Representative. So I don't disagree with anything that you said, but at the end of the day, here we are, and not all schools are equal, and not all schools have good teachers, and, and that's just the reality of life. So Central High School is a magnet school, and, well, I don't, I'm not saying it's a good or bad magnet school, it's a magnet school. It's not what the system is built on in the sense that neighborhood public schools, neighborhood schools, every family, every child getting a good quality education. And, you know, the issue that I'm wondering is, while the reality is that there's great disparity in education, but nonetheless, when the children graduate, there are the same standards for jobs and for careers, if they had vocational, for example, if they had career opportunities, or the academic opportunities. And competing, not just in Philadelphia, but whenever they compete, they're competing unbeknownst to them with someone in Singapore and someone in Poland because of the state of technology. The standardized test, while we don't want to go too much into a culture of education based on standardized tests, but to an extent, don't standardized tests let the student and the parents and the community know where they stand, and if, if, if they are short, they have an opportunity to bolster themselves, even if the school will not. What, what would be your reaction, and I'll put it this way. I, I come across honor students. They are all A students. They're barely literate. I think someone is trying to do them a, a good service by letting them have good grades, but they can't get a job, and they certainly have not done the best that they can with themselves. And I don't blame them because they, they just thought they did the best they possibly could because they have all As. But yet, on the standardized tests, they got very poor grades, and wouldn't that indicate to teachers, parents, family, church, somebody, that these kids need help? What, what would you say to that?
I, I would, I would actually go back and say, I think that the issue, and I, and I use Central, because I'm, I'm very proud of, of my high school, but in my mind, every school ought to be Central. And when, when I was, when I, when I was in high school, it really wasn't that long ago. You know, I, I, I'm a West Virginia guy. I've lived in West Virginia all my life, and so the kids I, I went to church with, who I were in my neighborhood, either went to Overbrook or Bartram or West Virginia High School. The reality was, we were studying exactly the same things. We were, we were taking the same sequence of math, you know, Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, pre-calculus, trigonometry. We were taking, reading the same literature, read the same endless books of Shakespeare and all the other things- and all the other thing, all the other English literature books we read. We were taking the same science, we had the same R2 in terms of the language studies. Schools were even. And that's what we don't have anymore. Our schools are simply not equal. That's wrong. And so we need to improve the delivery of curriculum. Why should it be that if I go to Central for a choice of seven languages, I go to West Philadelphia High School for a choice of one? That doesn't make any sense to me. That's not fair. That's not right. But it's, and also, I would say that the, there is as well, the, that, the, and I think you asked something about, about testing, standardized tests, I'm trying.
What I said is that, exactly what you just said, is that, in fact, while every school should be equal, they are not. And because they are not equal, standardized tests, which I understand the difference between having a culture of continuous standardized tests occupying all this time instead of learning, but the standardized test points out in reality just how great the disparity is in terms of performance of the child versus, they could see they don't have music, they could see they don't have art, but the performance of the child in core curriculum that is as considered, I believe, a minimum standard of education that should be produced in each school, and it even points out to us what you just said now, the great disparity and failings of this current system. If it wasn't for the standardized test, we wouldn't see that as visibly as we see it today.
But I think you've got to have a Common Core curriculum. The curriculum ought to be the same in any high school you go to in the city of Philadelphia. The opportunities for the courses ought to be, see, I just read an article, they've dropped physics at Bodine. How can that happen? How can you drop physics at a magnet school?[1098.08][1098.08](APPLAUSE). Okay, how can you drop physics at any school, not just a magnet school? How can you drop physics at any school? How can you drop core curriculum and say we're educating young people? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you very much, Representative Robach. We appreciate the job you do and your commitment to it.
Thank you.[1123.74][1123.74](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much. Panel Two. Christopher Schaefer, Deputy Chief, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, School District of Philadelphia. We gave you a lot to comment about. We're sure you're excited about this.
(LAUGHING). I'm okay.
Please identify yourself with the record, and then you feel free to begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Blackwell and members of the Committee of Education. My name is Christopher Schaefer, the Deputy Chief for the Office of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment for the School District of Philadelphia. I appreciate the opportunity to be here before you and testify on Resolution Number 140666 on the impact of standardized testing. The School District of Philadelphia administers seven state-mandated assessments throughout the academic year to a wide range of student cohorts and subgroups, ELL, special education, kindergarten, et cetera, through the Office of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. The first is the KEI, the Kindergarten Entrance Inventory, which is used to record a student's demonstration of skills and serve as an indicator of individual student needs in the cognitive and noncognitive key learning areas of social and emotional development, language and literacy, mathematics, approaches to learning, health, wellness, and physical development. ACCESS. Access provides a standardized measurement of academic language proficiency, reading, writing, speaking, listening, and comprehension for ELL students. It allows for monitoring progress of language proficiency and is used as a criterion for exiting students from our ELL programs. The WEADA Access Placement Test is an English language proficiency screener test given to incoming students who may be designated as English language learners. It assists educators with programmatic placement decisions such as identification and placement of ELLs. The PSSA, the Pennsylvania State System of Assessment, is an end-course assessment designed to assess proficiency in ELL, or pardon me, ELA, math and science. The Keystone exams are end-course assessments designed to assess proficiency in Algebra I, literature, and biology. They are state-mandated graduation requirements for students in the class of 2017 and beyond. The PBA, the Project-Based Assessments, are aligned with modules for each Algebra I, Biology, Keystone Literature Exam for students who are unable to demonstrate proficiency on the Keystone Exam or Module. Successful completion of the PBA shall satisfy the Keystone Exam graduation requirement. The PASA, the Pennsylvania Alternate System of Assessment, is designed for students with the most significant cognitive disabilities who are unable to participate meaningfully in the PSSA, even with appropriate accommodations. By administering the PASA to students with severe disabilities, schools achieve compliance with federal laws and the PA School Code that requires all students to participate in the statewide accountability system. In addition to the above-mentioned state-mandated assessments, the School District of Philadelphia administers three benchmark assessments in grades three through eight, Algebra I, Biology, and English II courses. Benchmark assessments serve as formative assessments to measure student progress relative to grade-level academic expectations. Results of these formative assessments provide teachers with timely data to inform their instruction during the school year. Thank you again for allowing me to testify today, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Councilman Squillor.
Thank you, and I, we appreciate your testimony. Now, Mr. Schaefer, are you in charge of the assessments in the Philadelphia School District?
Yes, all these, for, for the most part. A majority of the assessments fall within my department of the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Okay, so, but you are, I guess, in charge of monitoring or making sure that districts give these standardized tests?
Correct. The, the implementation and the monitoring falls within our department of most of the tests. Outside of someone that I have, which would be supported by our multilingual department as well as our early childhood education, and tests commensurate with our CTC students.
Now, I noticed beside the standardized testing that is mandated, the school district itself is now implementing three new benchmark testing, right?
Correct.
Correct. And what is the, as the benchmark testing, is there a cost to the district for the additional testing that will be now implemented?
Yeah, this is, this is the third year. Last year, they were not administered, the year before they were, so this is the third year of a three-year contract. I don't have the exact cost with me, however, I can get that and present that to the councilwoman.
Okay, we would like, if you could give that to the chair, it'd be great.
Sure.
Also, so this is the last year of the contract?
Correct.
So then is that contract going, is going to be renewed for next year or now?
No, we haven't discussed that at this point.
So you don't, you don't know if you will continue the benchmark testing moving forward?
With the current provider, and have not discussed that, or what decisions we'd make moving forward.
How about the philosophy of the district?
I think one of the things that I wanted to talk about, that I brought up, is the idea of the benchmark assessments, and particularly formative assessments. In hearing testimony, it seems that one of the most common denominators I hear is, that no one is opposed to accountability or monitoring our progress. And the benchmark assessments or formative assessments allow us to measure our progress over time during the year, but most importantly, it allows us to respond to any.
Guys, no holler now, no, everybody's gonna have a chance to testify.
Deficiencies that we may see. And this would be in contrast to the standardized tests that I've heard testimony today that are typically given at the end of the year and are summative in nature, so by the time the results come back, it's too late to respond.
So are, do we know, since we didn't do the benchmark testing last year, we did it the year before, correct?
Correct.
So are we monitoring the advancement from two years ago to the kids that are taking it this year?
We will be able to. We're in the, we're in the opening window of our first benchmark assessment.
All right, so.
And I also, you know, when I listened to the testimony before, it's, it's important to mention that there was a, a transition also happening when we were talking about the transition to the Pennsylvania Core Standards. So two years ago, when this was developed, the School District of Philadelphia was in a transition phase.
All right, did you, do we have a, a cost estimated for this benchmark testing? Do we have any materials that need to be bought, or is there anything that goes along with this benchmark testing? And, and is this testing going to be different than this testing, normal testing that's done within the school, within the class itself by the teachers?
So the, the testing is all online, with the exception of some constructed response. And the, the responses are graded, for lack of a better term, by the company. And turned around within 24 hours. So it's an online assessment, so you would take, and the results would come back instantaneously for the teacher.
So every student's going to take an online test now? Who?
In grades three through eight, and in the Keystone-assessed courses, which would be Algebra I, English II, and Biology.
And if, if the Keystone's then incorporate other curriculums, other, other testing, would this change?
The benchmark assessments are aligned to the Keystone.
The Keystone. So if they had 10 tests, then you would also have benchmarks for 10 tests?
No, we don't have 10 tests, so we're.
No, but the, the goal from the Keystone's was to have, like, they were going to create two more tests, correct? So it would be then a total of five?
That's what has been presented in various state roundtables. However, the development would take time, so, I mean, that's a difficult question for me to answer, in that there's been no timeframe at the state level that they've told us about any potential Keystone exams, so we're, we're looking at just the three that we have at this point.
But I mean, you could see now the potential that if they did go to five, then if you're going to monitor that, these benchmarks would then go to five. And then what resources are going to be used by the district to keep these benchmarks in consistency with the Keystone's? Would, is there going to be additional dollars spent from the district to run these benchmark testings to, I guess, go along with the Keystone's?
So I wouldn't want to speculate on that, in that you were talking about Keystone exams that would be in the future, but yes, we would pay a, a fee, a negotiated fee, for a number of, say, licenses or testing, so a number of students.
Who in the school takes the tests?
Students in grades three through eight in math and ELA, and students enrolled in English II, Biology.
Every student?
And Algebra I.
Every student that's enrolled.
Correct.
So.
In grades three through eight in the three courses in the high school.
And special ed?
Yes, pending on the accommodations and at what level, yes.
So special ed and English as a second language, I guess, that also.
Correct.
But they all would be taking the same test?
Correct.
That's crazy.
Wow.[1782.13][1782.13](LAUGHING). And I understand, and again, this is all for accountability and be able to monitor students through the educational process, and, and we know the district is short on, on funds, and that's why I keep asking, since the contract is over.